With that, let's move on to item A. Update on COVID-19 response efforts. Mr. Jennifer Dianos.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're just pulling up the presentation now. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Jennifer Dianos and I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. And here this evening to provide you a COVID-19 update on behalf of the AOC Public Information Team. This evening, I will go over our current status, our county statistics, testing and vaccine information, and a short preview of a few virtual programs the city is offering. I will be available for questions at the end of the presentation. San Mateo County remains in the purple or the widespread tier of the blueprint for a safer economy. This status has not changed since the last update to you last month. As you can see on the screen, our county metrics are listed by the state and were updated earlier today. Our adjusted case rate is currently at 15.4, a positivity rate of 3.8, and a health equity quartile positivity rate at 6.5. These represent the criteria for movement within the tiers of the blueprint. There's a lot of information on the screen, I realize that, but I did want to show you where we are versus what is required for us to move to the next tier. So looking at this criteria, we currently need two of the three categories to move to the lower tier. However, all three must be met before moving, thus we remain at the widespread level. Regards to local statistics, for San Mateo County, there are 37,139 total cases in the county and a total of 447 deaths. The graph titled Cases by Episode Date in the middle of the screen demonstrates a decline in new cases, but that does not mean to let your guard down, so please continue to wear your mask, stay your distance, and wash your hands. In San Bruno, there are a total of 2,057 cases reported as of February 4, and you can see by the shading on the map that it's relative within the county. And lastly, I've included a newer dashboard that was set up by the county. I think the last report out included this information as well. It has data related to vaccinations within our county. So currently, there are 84,783 vaccinated and just under 20,000 that have completed the entire series. To the right of the screen, you'll see the very distribution providers in our area, and there's both Pfizer and Moderna vaccines that are being administered. Before I go into a little bit more about vaccines, I would have mentioned that the county has transitioned their COVID testing sites to locations other than San Mateo County Event Center, which has housed it for several months now. And one of those locations is located in San Bruno. The site that was previously used as a mobile testing site every other week is now offering drive-through testing. That testing is offered Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and the location is Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints located at 975 St. Lane. This test is for adults and children ages 5 and older. Oops, I got hit myself there. And appointments are required. The appointment link is on the screen. It's A V E L L I N O C O V two dot com, which is a mouthful, but you can also link to it through the county site, and that's S M C gov dot org forward slash testing. The city continues to also partner with the county to offer local self-administered tests on Saturday, and that's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's currently scheduled through the end of February, and scheduling is reevaluated on a monthly basis by our AOC team. We're currently serving a range from about 150 to 200 people each Saturday, and we've gotten up to 350 on one of those weekends. The site is located at 530 Huntington and is also open for adults and children ages 5 and older. You can link to the schedule and to make an appointment by visiting sanbruno.ca.gov forward slash local testing. For the self-administered test, it is important to know that test takers should not eat, drink, or smoke 20 minutes prior to taking the test, as it may affect the results. And here, I'm hoping that most of our residents and community members are already signed up for the City Manager's A newsletter, and if not, please subscribe on our website. But in the most recent addition, there was an update on vaccines. The primary question everyone seems to be asking is when and where can I be vaccinated? The answer can vary depending on personal circumstances, including age and insurance. However, most residents will receive their vaccine from their primary care provider as soon as they're eligible to and supply allows. Eligibility is set by federal and state guidelines to ensure safe and equitable distribution. To be notified when you're eligible to receive the vaccine, there are a couple of different tools to use. And I'm not sure that the tools cross one another at this time, and so the best recommendation is to sign up or use all of them just to ensure that you're notified timely, because you wouldn't want to miss the opportunity. So first is the state notification system, which is called MyTurn. You can sign up at myturn.ca.gov. The county has also established a notification system, which I've linked in the presentation. The direct link is very long, so I'm not going to read it out loud, but I do recommend that you go to the county health site. That's S M C health dot org forward slash COVID vaccine. And on that link, you'll find a direct link to the notification system as well as other valuable information on this process. The county has provided information on the current distribution of vaccinations as of February 5, and you'll see that in the graphic here on the slide. This includes Phase 1A, the categories of healthcare workers and long-term care residents. It's approximately 50,000 individuals. And Phase 1B for adults 75 and over, 65 and over, residents in vulnerable communities, first responders, food and agriculture, teachers and school staff. And that's approximately 167 individuals there. These numbers are also included in the above vaccination dashboard that we just looked at. The county remains committed to ensuring those that want the vaccine will receive the vaccine when they're eligible. So this process is all contingent on vaccine availability and can change with very short notice. So it's important to check with your provider frequently and sign up for the notifications. Large vaccination sites in our region are operating when a large amount of doses are available, so be sure to sign up so you're alerted timely. The county has also put together a data page that shows how many residents in a community are vaccinated in San Bruno. There's just under 4,500 individuals that have been vaccinated. But remember, even though you receive a shot or know somebody that has, it's important to continue to take the precautionary measures to prevent the spread of COVID. So wear your mask in public, keep your distance, and wash your hands. Next, I'll go over a few recreational activities for you and your family. City playgrounds remain open with modifications. There is signage located at parks and near the place structures as a reminder to play safe, plan ahead, and know when to stay home. If you or anyone in your family is feeling under the weather, please stay home. Basketball courts, tennis courts, the dog park, public restrooms, and practice play on athletic fields all remain open. That has not changed. However, picnic sites, drinking fountains, indoor facilities, rentals, competitive play on the athletic fields are all not allowed. These are reviewed by our AOC team regularly to ensure safety compliance for our community. And since many are at home and may not be comfortable out at the parks, we do offer March Rec in a Bag. This includes themed crafts that can keep your family busy. Each bag is $20 and includes instructions and supplies for five projects that you can do safely at home. You can register online at sanbruno.ca.gov forward slash, excuse me, recs sign up. Our library team is offering Stories of My People with Kirk Waller, an award-winning storyteller. Kirk Waller will virtually share African and African-American folk tale legend and history through music, movement, and singing. Pre-registration is required for this library event, and it's available online at appointment.sanbrunolibrary.org. And as you know, our small businesses help make our community our character and our vitality, so we want to help support them. So shop local, eat local, support our local businesses at any opportunities that you can. And lastly, please make sure to stay connected. Sign up for emergency notifications through S M C Alert and follow us on social media. All are linked on the slide and can also be found on our website. That concludes my presentations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for your report. And I'm going to turn now for questions, and Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you for that report, Jennifer. A lot of information there. I mean, most importantly, everybody continue to be safe. The question I have for staff is for some clarity regarding parking enforcement, street sweeping, and 72-hour enforcement. That is now being enforced, and just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, that has come up, and obviously, it has a gamut of people liking that it was suspended, people not liking it, but city staff, can you please clarify?
Yes, sure. Councilmember Medina, City Council and community members. Councilmember Medina is correct. The city has resumed enforcement of ticketing as well as street sweeping enforcement during the street sweeping days in both sides of the community. And so we do want cars moved, and we are also now enforcing the 72-hour rule.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
So I had a question about violations of the rules. And I got an email over the weekend from a resident who saw a large gathering in City Park where people, it was a large group, people weren't wearing masks. And I was wondering if there was any advice to the public about, you know, is the city enforcing? Is that something that they should be reporting? Or is it something that we should notify the county about? And obviously, by the time they were to do something about it, the people would probably be gone. So I'm just wondering if there's any advice on how to handle those situations.
Councilmember Salazar, one of the most difficult things to enforce are the mask rules in our parks, because there is an exemption on wearing a mask when exercising. And so people using our parks are taking recreational activities, even walking, can do so without masks. So we do routinely receive those calls and provide that information. The county does have a reporting mechanism for businesses that people observe violating the health and safety orders, and that information has been provided and is on the city's website, and you can link directly to that from the city's homepage.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the difficulty in enforcing some of those things and distinguishing which activities are which. So I appreciate all the information on the report, and well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Thank you for the report. Just echoing Councilmember Salazar, I thought at one point we had talked about putting some signs up at the park. I know the city of San Mateo has signs up at their parks, and they do require masks to be worn at their parks. And in addition, it says you must maintain a six-foot distance. So I don't know if that's an ordinance, then maybe the city manager would have to respond, whether that, I mean, the city attorney, whether that's an ordinance that San Mateo has enacted. But I was recently at a San Mateo park, and the signs were very evident, and they were very clear all over the park.
Go ahead, City Manager.
So Councilmember Mason, you're exactly correct. We have ordered additional signage for the parks. We expect them to arrive today, and we will put additional signage at all parks. There is existing signage at our place structures and at some of the entrances to parks. And taking suggestions from the community and the council, we did order additional signs, and they have just have not arrived yet.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we thank you again, staff. And we'll move on to item B. Receive update from San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. And I believe we're going to have a representative from the district. And I don't know the title, so I apologize. Mr. Stevenson, please, the floor is yours.
All right, I'm going to share my screen here. All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, so my name is Casey Stevenson. I work for San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control. I'm the field supervisor. I was asked to come here and kind of just discuss district services by our, we have a board of trustees, so our trustee for San Bruno, Robert Rico, asked me to come here today and just kind of talk about our district services and what we provide to the city of San Bruno and San Mateo County. So our district has been around since 1916. We've been protecting public health since then. Kind of our mission, you know, we try to safeguard the health and comfort of the citizens of San Mateo County through a planned program to monitor and reduce mosquitoes and other vectors. We are an independent special district funded by property tax and special assessments. So if you look at your property tax bill, you will see us on there. All services we provide at no charge to residents of San Mateo County. Just kind of a few things that we do at our district, a brief overview. Obviously, our bread and butter is mosquitoes. We do tons of inspections and treatments all over San Mateo County and in San Bruno. Some of the few other things we do that people might not know about, we do yellow jacket and wasp removal. These usually start popping up in about May and usually go all the way into October. So if someone has a yellow jacket or wasp nest on their property, please give us a call. And another thing we do, we do a lot of rodent inspections. We do those for cities, we do them for residential properties. And for that, we're kind of just going out to people's properties and kind of looking. They might think rats are getting in some out. So we'll kind of assess their property and give them a nice inspection report and kind of be like, hey, this is what you can do to make your property less attractive to rodents. Like I said, we do have tons of mosquito treatments. So this is kind of a comparison of what we've done the last four years in San Mateo County. And it stays relatively the same over the years. You know, we do tons of site visits. So in 2020, we did about 28,000 site visits. And during those site visits of those, we treated about 9,500 sites. In San Mateo County, we have about 8,500 potential mosquito breeding sites that we look after, basically. Just in comparison, you know, in 2010, our staff performed about 22,000 mosquito treatments. And you see in 2020, we did about 9,500 mosquito treatments. We've kind of lowered our mosquito treatments over time, and one of the reasons was we put an increased emphasis on educating property owners about the importance of eliminating mosquito habitats. So you know, kind of just telling them, hey, you know, this container here that holds water can breed mosquitoes, can cause a lot of issues for your neighbors, let alone yourself. So I think we've been able to educate the public about the potential dangers of mosquitoes and just what a nuisance it is, actually. And then over time, when I started doing mosquito control in 2008, the products we used to control the juvenile mosquitoes would only last about four to six weeks. But currently today, we have products that can last up to five months in the specific water source that we're treating. So that's kind of reduced the amount of treatments we had to do over time. And since our district has become, you know, we've, a lot more people know about us now, we've had a high volume of service calls have increased over time. So this extra time frees us up to respond to a service call within 24 to 48 hours. So if you call our district on a Monday night saying you have a mosquito breeding or you think there's mosquitoes biting you, we'll be coming out the next day. It also allows staff to conduct more surveillance and control and more mosquitoes in more areas of San Mateo County. So, you know, we're trying to reach everywhere in the county, basically. And this helps us control West Nile virus and any invasive species of mosquitoes that might enter our county, such as eighties agypta. Just a little background on San Bruno, kind of what we do in this area for mosquito control. We have about 200 actively monitored mosquito, potential mosquito breeding sites that we monitor regularly. And in 2020, we had about 61 service calls. This is kind of just a map of the city of San Bruno. Kind of, it shows the dispersion of our mosquito sites. So you can see they can, they range all the way from 101 all the way up to Highway 35. So they're pretty evenly distributed throughout that area. Some of the sites we come across, if we're at residential properties, are usually like an abandoned fish pond, which we can put mosquito fish in, and they would control the mosquito larva. And other things, you know, find random containers on people's properties that after the rainy season, people might not know about. That can breed tons of mosquitoes also. These are things we like to educate the public about on how they can control the mosquitoes. We also have a lot of natural sources in San Bruno, and we call them seasonal impound. So these are things that fill in with rainwater. And if that water sits there long enough, they can tend to breed mosquitoes also. And you know, we are in an urban environment, so a lot of these natural areas back up the neighborhoods. And so if these mosquitoes go off, it can cause a real problem for these neighborhoods. And then talking municipal-wise, you know, a lot of storm drains all throughout the county can breed mosquitoes, especially the specific mosquito that can transmit West Nile virus. So we have a seasonal crew completely dedicated to treating all the storm drains in San Mateo County during the summertime. In one month, all eight of them can treat up to between 50,000 and 60,000 catch basins in a month. Like I said, back to service requests, you know, it's a 24 to 48-hour response time. We do get a lot of mosquito calls, a lot of rodent calls, where we're just doing inspections and advising the residents on how to make their properties less attractive to them. We collect dead birds, so that's a big thing. Please, if you find a dead bird, call us, and we'll come pick up the dead bird. And that's one of our ways of testing for West Nile virus in San Mateo County. And also, we do a lot of insect identification. So if you have a bug on your property and you're not sure what it is, you call us and we can come pick it up. You can email us a photograph of it, and we can assess your situation and just give you more information about that insect. Briefly, just kind of, this is a service request by city. I just really want to focus on San Bruno and kind of the most requests we get for the city of San Bruno are about mosquitoes. In 2020, we had 14 mosquito calls. We had 12 standing water calls. So that's kind of like a see something, say something. You know, if there's any stagnant water anywhere, it has the potential to breed mosquitoes. So please give us a call if you see something like that. And then yellow jacket calls, you know. If you ever stepped on a yellow jacket or been stung by a yellow jacket, it doesn't feel good. You know, and we do that to protect the public. So please give us a call if you see any of these things on here. And kind of another little distribution map of all of our service requests in the city of San Bruno for the year 2020. You see, once again, they're pretty evenly distributed. And just kind of an example of some of the things we see when we're doing inspection of residential properties. This is obviously an extreme case, but there's probably like 30 containers here, and they're all holding water. If these were to go left untended, untreated, not dumped out, they could produce thousands of mosquitoes that would not only affect this property owner, but is also affecting the surrounding neighbors, which could make them really upset. So, you know, dump it out if you got it. Also, water under the house, you know. How many people really ever go under their house to look underneath it? But we find this fairly often in multiple cities throughout San Mateo County. So when some properties, the ground settles, and then these pipes kind of shear and break and cause a leak, and over time, this water accumulates, and this can produce millions of mosquitoes. So, you know, periodically, look under your house. If you're noticing mosquitoes, just give us a call. You know, we're going to go house to house until we find a problem. We don't stop. And then once again, creeks, creeks can, over time and in the summer, you know, when they tend to slow down, they can produce mosquitoes. So as a district, we do a lot of legwork in the early spring. We trim these creeks out and make sure there's no blockage of water so the water can continuously flow. So that kind of reduces the amount of larviciding material or pesticide we have to put in this water during the summertime when there are pockets of it. And then kind of one of the largest natural areas in San Bruno, it kind of spans Millbury and San Bruno, is Mills Field. And our technician for the city, he does tons of control work out here. There's about 32 to 40 acres of tulip ponds that can breed mosquitoes in the summertime, basically, and in the wintertime. So he usually starts in January, and he's out here every single week checking all of these areas to see if mosquitoes are being produced. This is a very sensitive habitat, and it's very hard to access for it. As you can see with these pictures here, you can see the cattail ponds are completely overgrown. So one of the ways we treat these, starting in July, we bring a helicopter in that drops a dry larviciding material directly into the water that can control the mosquitoes for up to a month. So we do that monthly, starting in July, August, September, October, and that helps control the mosquitoes. And then they do, once they get colder, they do slow down their growth process. Sometimes, you know, this was this summer 2020, that's me with the hose right there, spraying a liquid larvicide into the tulip ponds. As the summer progresses in Mills Field, things do dry up. So it's not fiscally responsible to bring out a helicopter. That's a pretty expensive treatment for only five acres of property when before we were treating 32 acres. So we have some pretty heavy equipment that we can bring out and drive safely down the road through Mills Field and treat this accordingly. So that's pretty much it for my talk. Like I said, I thank you for having me here. This is kind of an example of us spraying. And I would like to thank our trustee for setting this up. And if you guys have, feel free to have any questions. Our email address is there and our district phone number. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevenson, for your report. And if you could stop sharing your screen, and thank you, sir. Any questions? I see Councilmember Hamilton.
Not a question, just a brief comment. I had no idea the breadth of services that was, that's being provided by the Mosquito and Vector Control District. So I really appreciate this presentation and encourage the residents in attendance to use the services that you described. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Mason.
I just wanted to thank you for responding to the email with, there were a number of questions that had been raised, and I just want to thank you for that.
And I also want to thank you for your passion. Who knew mosquitoes could be so exciting? So thank you.
I love my job, so.
It shows. And I want to say, and I know obviously, under COVID times, there is not the ability, but I believe Councilmember Salazar has been, as well as I. You go by Rollins Road, they had an open house. It was very informative, and you could see the various animals. You could see the equipment that's used. And I will tell you, you can drive by it, maybe not even know it's there, but when you go inside and see all that is done and how it operates, it's amazing. And I know they allow, once we get out of this, and we will, they do allow folks to come by, visit, and do open houses. And I would encourage anybody who hasn't done that, you would even learn much more about what they offer and what they do. So, Mr. Stevenson, go ahead, sir.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say thank you for that. You know, we have a great website also that you guys can check out in the meantime during this COVID times. But yeah, definitely, please come out whenever. Our district's always open 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, except in COVID time.
Yes, but thank you again. Please pass on our thanks and also take this opportunity, as you mentioned, your board, our board member, you, Robert, who makes sure on an annual basis we kept, we keep informed, and we know what's going on, and so we appreciate. And please pass on our thanks to everybody there that does the work they do.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, you too.
All right, we're going to move on to item C under announcements and presentations. Receive presentation on city utility billing process. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and member of the public. I'm here tonight to provide a presentation that's titled Understanding San Bruno's Utility Bills. So I'm here tonight in two capacities, one as your City Manager, but also as your interim finance director until we fill that position, which should be shortly. So since, what the City Council knows is that since we launched our effort to improve deficiencies in our stormwater system, we've had a spike in questions about some of our other utilities. And so we're here tonight to talk about those utilities that we bill for on a regular basis, a bi-monthly basis. And so those are water, sewer, and trash. Stormwater, as we all know, is on the annual property tax. So our objective for tonight is to provide the City Council and the community with an overview of the city's bi-monthly utility billing process, thereby providing an answer to one of the commonly asked questions that I know you receive and that we receive here, which is why do I receive such a large utility bill from the city of San Bruno every two months? We get that question, and so let's pull back the covers a little bit and attack that. And so let me also say, tonight is not an in-depth presentation about our utility rates and the structures. We're really talking about the utility billing process. We're really talking about the utility billing process, but we'll also have some comparisons. And so the agenda for this presentation is structured as follows. We'll have a background, we'll talk about the uh, bi-monthly bill, we'll see a few sample bills. We'll see a billing process comparison with a lot of, with a few of our neighboring jurisdictions. And then we'll look at a few rate comparisons and then I'll provide a summary. So launching into the background, uh, our finance department here in the city of San Bruno administers a bi-monthly billing process for water, sewer and trash services. That is both sending paper bills and paperless bills approximately, uh, we, we have uh, for all three of those utilities, approximately fifteen thousand uh, individual uh, customer counts. Our public works department is the department that operates and maintains our water and sewer enterprises. Uh, and recology is our contract provider for residential and commercial waste and recycling services. But we do bill on their behalf as per the city's contract with recology. So frequently asked question, why, why do I receive a bill uh, from the city of San Bruno every two months that's so large? What I want to submit to you that the primary answer to that question is related more in how we bill than the actual amount of the bill. Uh, and through this presentation, uh, I would like to provide a few uh, data points to articulate that. So first off, let's talk about the bill. It's actually not one bill. It is six bills in one. It is a bi-monthly bill that is actually comprised of six charges. Two months worth of water charges, two months worth of sewer and two months worth of trash. For residential customers, we provide uh, two payment options. They can pay in full or they can pay over two equal installments. And uh, there is a actual bill that, that is up on the screen. But on the text, I want to highlight the billing cycle. And so this is a residential bill. And just to give you a little lay of the land, the service period is from November twenty-first, twenty twenty through January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, so a sixty-day period. The statement was issued on January twenty-seventh. With the first payment due thirty days after the end of the service period, so on February twentieth. And the very last payment should the resident choose to do so twenty days after the first payment uh, on March tenth, which is industry standard to structure those payments that way and was uh, twenty days apart. Now let's uh, take a quick look at a sample utility bill. And this is a bi-monthly statement uh, for a residential customer. Quickly, I want to highlight in the uh, top left-hand area, we provide a uh, a summary of utility, actually water consumption. Uh, and so in this case, uh, the total consumption is uh, averaging around sixteen units. On the top uh, right-hand side, there's account information. Uh, some information on this particular bill has been blocked out, but there circled in red is where uh, we provide the service period. I'll pause thereby saying that we can actually improve on the structure of this bill. Because for many of our customers, what we've heard is it's actually not clear that they're receiving a two-month bill. Uh, and so in very small print in the top right-hand corner is the only place that we really articulate that this is a two-month bill. Uh, and then there are the two payment subs that are shown here on, in the lower right-hand area. And then on the rear, on the back of the bill, we provide uh, significant information on uh, the water rate. Uh, we explain our tiered water structure. We explain both the fixed and consumption charges for uh, sewer or wastewater as well. Uh, and we also provide information on the structure of the total charges for garbage. There is also a table that shows the precise date that your meter was read, both at the beginning of the period and the, and the end of the period, as well as general billing information. So why do we issue a bi-monthly bill? Well, the answer is quite simple. It saves money uh, and labor. Thereby reducing costs to our ratepayers and saving valuable tax dollars. Each bi-monthly cycle costs the city approximately five thousand two hundred dollars for printing postage and service fees. Does not include labor. If we were to convert to a monthly billing process, we would essentially double those charges. And so by having a bi-monthly process, we are saving our, our ratepayers in approximately thirty-one thousand dollars a year simply by billing uh, bi-monthly, by issuing a bi-monthly statement, but giving our ratepayers the options to pay monthly. So that's, that's answer one. It's a bi-monthly bill, um, uh, but you're given the option uh, to pay it in two installments. The next part of the answer is um, to why is the bill so large here? It's really the structure. We are somewhat unique amongst our neighboring cities in that we are the only agency that sends a bill on our letterhead in our name for all three of these utilities. Water, sewer and trash. And so if you were to assume that the rates were nearly equivalent amongst the five uh, jurisdictions that are shown here, San Bruno, South San Francisco, Millbury, Pacifica and San Francisco, we're the only city where that comes in one bi-monthly statement. And so there's a, even if the rates were equivalent, there's a feeling that I'm paying the city a significant amount. Whereas in other cities, uh, the residents or property owners are not paying that to the city, simply by the structure of it. And so what's shown here is in South San Francisco, water is billed by Cow Water or the Westboro Water District on a monthly basis. Sewer is billed by the city or the Westboro Water District on property tax, so annual um, on the county property tax roll. And trash is billed by South San Francisco Scavenger every three months. Millbury is the closest to us. They are issuing bi-monthly bills for water and sewer under the city's header. But garbage is billed by South San Francisco Scavenger, who is their contract provider. In the city of Pacifica, the North Coast County Water District provides a bi-monthly water bill. The city uh, provides property tax, uh, I'm sorry, provides sewer on the property tax bill. And just as a reminder to the public, that means you're not getting the bill every month or, or every two months. That is on your property tax. So it's one statement listed with all of the other charging agencies on the property tax bill. And then recology is billed bi-monthly. And in the city of San Francisco, there are San Francisco Water, Power and Sewer, which is actually a division of the San Francisco PUC. They issue monthly bills for water and sewer, uh, and trash is monthly by recology. So uh, I, I, I want the council and the public to take away that part of the, the reason is because we are doing the billing. Uh, and it's all on the city's letterhead. And we do it bi-monthly, which gives the appearance of a larger bill than just issuing monthly statements. Next, I wanted to provide a sample bi-monthly bill by type. Uh, and uh, the three types that are shown, staff tells me are relative um, examples of what uh, a commercial uh, account and a residential and a multifamily account pays, but it's not the average, but it is a close uh, approximation. And so uh, uh, the first one is a commercial account for a rep, for a restaurant that are issuing monthly statements. And so that is a total monthly statement of seven hundred and seventeen dollars. A single-family residence, uh, typically in our city has a bi-monthly statement of somewhere between uh, four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty dollars. And what's shown here is five hundred and fifty, uh, seven dollars. And a multi-unit, a multifamily individual unit account um, has uh, a typical statement around three hundred and uh, around three hundred dollars. And what's shown here is three hundred and uh, thirty-four dollars. And again, all of these um, charges are based on consumption for water and sewer, as well as fixed charges. And for trash, it's based on the size of the trash receptacles uh, you'd have whether you're a residential or a, or a, or a commercial customer. So with that information, let's do a quick look at where we fall with respect to rates. Uh, and so this information is provided to the city council uh, every time we do a uh, water or sewer uh, rate study. Uh, for this presentation, we did have our consultant uh, freshen up the rates. Uh, and so these are accurate as of January uh, twenty-one. And so we do have a presentation coming up next. Well, we'll talk about uh, canceling the prior planned five percent rate increases for water and sewer. These charts are replicated there and Public Works Director Jimmy Tan will move on to uh, more detail. Just at a high level, what I want to point out here is that we provide uh, benchmark information for other cities and agencies in the peninsula. And for water at a uh, six unit uh, water consumption count, the bill in San Bruno will be eighty-one point forty, eighty-one dollars, eighty-one dollars and forty, forty-one cent. It's nearly equivalent to the average uh, of all of the agencies here, which is eighty-one uh, sixty-four. And so our charges are on par. It's a little bit more, it's about seven dollars more than the median, uh, but we are totally within the standard deviation. And so uh, our charges for water are on par with neighboring agencies. The other thing I want to point out with this, with this chart for both water and sewer is that the specific charge that a agency may have for water and sewer is really dependent on the operating cost to maintain their system, as well as the fixed charges to uh, replace and maintain capital infrastructure. And as we know here, back in seventeen eighteen, the city of San Bruno actually had to increase our rates in order to cover needed capital improvements. And so while you can look at this chart and say, well, we're not on the low, on the low end, another way to look at it is say, we are within the average. And, and, and the same thing is true here shown for sewer. Uh, the average is a hundred dollars and twenty-six cents and our charge is a hundred dollars and thirty-one cents. Um, and we are uh, about three dollars higher than the median. So again, our cost is based on, or our charge is based on our, our, our operating cost and our capital expenditures. But overall, we are in line uh, with our peers. Next, we have a comparison for trash. Uh, and this chart was to, was provided to the city council on March tenth, twenty twenty uh, at the last recology rate increase. And so what we know from the data that's shown here is that the peer rate average for a thirty-two gallon toter, the most common residential toter uh, is thirty-three dollars um, for the average and the median. And we are just below that at thirty-one ninety-three. And so again, our charges for trash are on par with our peers. And so in conclusion, sort of in answering that question, why are city bi-monthly utility bills so large? Uh, I really want to submit that we're sort of unique here in that we do the direct billing with our low bill on our letterhead for water, sewer and trash on a bi-monthly basis. Um, residents are uh, as a reminder, provided uh, the ability to pay in two equal installments. But that bi-monthly bill again is six charges. It's two months worth of water, two months worth of sewer and two months worth of trash. And overall, our rates are on par with our peer agencies. Now again, that doesn't mean that a resident receiving that bill saying, you know, this is a large bill and I talked to people that live in other cities and they don't get this. That's true. But when you truly break it down, um, it's really related more to the structure uh, of, of the bill. Lastly, we can improve on formatting layout to provide better clarity. Uh, and it, it is not lost on me that if we need to give representations to explain our utility bills, we can make our utility bills a little clearer. Uh, and so uh, we will work on that. And so next steps, uh, because this is uh, uh, and has been um, a question that I, that we received, we will do additional public outreach on the city's utility billing process. Um, we will also include an explanation of this bill and other related information in a effort that we're developing. Uh, we are developing a new resident welcome package. So when we have a new uh, customer sign up for a utility account, we can provide them with information uh, and, and, and places and place uh, why our bill is structured that way in context. We will assess and implement format changes to again, provide a greater clarity on the structure of our utility bill. And we will also strive to convert additional customers to paperless. Uh, right now of those fifteen thousand um, uh, individual utility accounts, about half are on paperless. And so if we can convert uh, another twenty-five percent, uh, that will create a significant savings. And we will certainly undertake that as a work, as a, as a work effort. So with that, um, I want to conclude the presentation. Uh, there's no action scheduled for council tonight. Uh, we just wanted to provide that information. Uh, happy to take any questions.
Thank you for bringing back the screen. Real quick, and I know it's, could be considered a pass-through, but by us uh, putting on the same bill recology, they also help contribute toward the cost of the mailing. City manager?
That is, that is true, ma- mayor.
Okay, all right. Um, oh, I'm sorry folks, switch over to panelists. Councilmember Hamilton, apologize for the delay.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. Um, uh, thank you, city manager for the, for the presentation. The um, uh, more of a, of a comment than a question. I, I, I'm, I'm glad to see that, that um, you're looking into um, formatting changes for the bill. Um, uh, one suggestion that I would, that I would make when going through that effort would be to um, you know, right now, when you look at the bill and I'm looking at, I, I brought mine out uh, as you, as you were going through it, um, is just to be, just to have simple subtotals. How much of this bill is water? How much of this bill is sewer? How much of this bill is recology? Uh, right now, there's four lines for water that I need to add up in my head to know how much the, you know, what the percentage of my bill is for water. Um, I think that would be something simple and, and you can gain the space because the, the, the graph for unit consumption is on the front and on the back, the exact same graph. So there's, yeah, there's all kinds of room for improvement there, but I would, I would just suggest that having some, you know, big bold subtotals of this is what you're paying for each of the, each of the big three, of the three pillars would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seen any more council hands. I do see a member of the public and would ask the city clerk if uh, you could bring him in, please.
Uh, yes, Malcolm Robinson.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hey, um, thank you, city council for allowing me to speak. Um, I should put my glasses on. Um, my concern over the water sewage, um, uh, garbage bill is not formatting. It's not a formatting issue. It's the cost keeps going up. The cost of everything in San Bruno keeps going up, and I'll save some of this for later. But my utility bill has gone up ten percent a year. So since uh, we've had this city manager, it's gone up thirty percent. So, so why is that? We're, you admit we're paying above-average prices for the peninsula. Um, you know, I, I just not seeing where this, this money's going. The, the services provided are lessening. I do water aerobics. You cut the water aerobics budget twenty percent and cut a month out of the service. This year, we didn't even have water aerobics. Pacifica does. They seem to be able to get their act together. So why this increase in costs and everything from water to cable to garbage to flood protection? Um, the library is closed, closed for months. I have to go to Berlin game to go to the library. So to me, this is symptomatic of a large-scale, you know, um, trying to find the right words, large-scale increase of living in, in this town. Now, I talked to the city manager about it. He said, don't talk to me anymore. Talk to the city council. Well, city council, you're the guys we elect to manage our city, to, to better manage our city. And I look for you all to dig into why the costs of everything are going up in this town and please get it under control. Um, because if you guys can't, we'll have to find somebody else who can. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. We have another, uh, we have one more speaker. If you could bring that speaker in now, please, uh, the, Mr.
Uh, yes, one moment. Um, Jeffrey Tong. Trying to bring you in here. Give me a little problem.
Hi, this is Jeffrey Tong speaking. Um, Jovan Gurgan mentioned that San Bruno rates are divided into six parts. He also mentioned that compared with other cities, we are relatively on par with them. But looking at our utility bills, water and garbage. But looking at our utility bills, water and garbage, um compared from past years, it has gone up significantly, and we haven't used more water, we haven't used more, in fact, we use less water. Um our garbage bill seems to have gone up significantly as well. Part of it, they claim, is because we are recycling more, or they're, they're collecting more for recycling, but what are, if you want to save money, uh teach people how to compost instead of collecting more. Um I, I think you're, you're just doing too much unnecessary things. One of the greatest uh things that we probably could use, excuse me, is collect community trash, people throwing away uh sofas and beds and other things out there. Um but for the, the people at large, we could reduce the amount that they charge by um reallocating uh how we uh collect, um e- especially with recycling. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, let's bring it back to the city council, councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, let me put my hand down. Um these, this last set of increases, they came before the council, before I was on the council, and I, I am curious to know, because I've heard varying uh degrees of this, how long have these increases been in place? Um is question one, and then question two is uh when does this last round of five-year increases end?
Um you know, excuse me, um since we have that item next about the water uh wastewater rates, and we have people waiting for us on that topic, I think that might be there, I think this is about the layout of the bill.
Okay, that's fine, however, however you want to handle it.
Yeah, since we have them standing by, Vice Mayor Medina.
Um I can wait for uh, for the consultant, I, I think basically what I would like to say is um the answer is complicated. And, and I think clearly we need to do a better job to explain it and have that explanation provided on our website, perhaps put a video together, kind of to quickly summarize what, what uh the facts are. And uh I just wanted to add that, and we can uh talk about this in our next part of sewer and uh water rate uh increase that we're gonna eliminate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. Uh I just wanted to um say that I, I still, I, I still believe that there would be a benefit to trying to move toward a monthly bill for, for a number of reasons, and I know that it adds cost, but if we can definitely get a majority of residents to uh sign up for an electronic uh bill, so we, we don't have to incur uh printing and handling costs. Um and, and honestly, I don't even, I, I couldn't tell you how to go about doing that. So if I go to the website, I don't see where I would sign up for uh an electronic bill, so it's definitely not an easy thing, uh it's not obvious. And so uh I mean, that would clearly be a first step, is if we can get uh as, as uh the, the city manager mentioned, it would be a clear step, but you know, I um you know, people have um large leaks in their house, and they have to wait two months to see a large bill to figure it out. Uh that's, you know, for a lot of people, oftentimes too late, and I know that there is some forgiveness, uh but I think it would be better not to waste the water in the first place, rather than wait uh longer to do it. I know back when we had to rely on people to physically read meters, um it was uh definitely cost prohibitive to have extra staff to read the meters uh that, that often, but now that uh they're read um remotely and electronically, um I, I think there might be some benefit to that. Uh and, and also, you know, there might be a benefit in having the city receive payments more frequently because we have use of that money and interest on that money that we could uh collect, and then um if uh accounts were to go bad, uh we might have a heads-up on that sooner rather than later if the, if the bills weren't coming two months ahead, so. Um I, I, you know, I, I understand the reasons for, for why we don't do it now, but um I, I think we could strive to move to that. And uh not only that, I mean, getting a smaller bill m- might be easier to handle for a lot of households where they're, if they're not, uh you know, chipping away at it uh based on a, on a more predictable cycle, i- it, it's definitely harder. It's a, it's one big bill that comes and might be more of a surprise if it's every other month rather than a monthly thing that they could plan for, so. Uh that was, I definitely appreciate the information, I, I think uh information like this is important to get out to the public, there's a lot of bad information out there and a lot of misunderstandings about how we, how we operate, how we do things, and, and I think this is a, a really good uh step in that direction in terms of providing that information to the public. So thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, just one, one quick follow-up, I, I agree with um with councilmember Salazar and what he said about it, it, it not being clear how to sign up for paperless billing. And I just want to, I just have a question about how exactly have we set up our paperless billing? I, I, I can see on the bill, and I've actually used the option, that there is an option to pay online, but I need to, I need to go there and log in and figure out how much I owe. And um, and I've used that when I was almost late on my bill. Um and so, but uh how, how does the paperless billing work? Is it sending out an email or whatever to, so we know how much to pay and, and then and then it's directing people to that same portal, or is it some other method, mechanism?
Thank you, councilmember Hamilton. Uh you can actually sign up for paperless billing on the online portal uh for, for uh water and sewer services. One of the challenges is that we do not have um half of our customers even sign up for the online portal. And so it's a, it's a two-pronged effort, uh and we uh channeling, councilmember Medina, uh the answer is complicated, uh but that is not sufficient, and we need to be, be complicated and make it simple. Uh and this also relates to uh another organizational improvement uh that we're working on, which is updating our website, uh completely changing the interface, making it more customer uh friendly, and changing how people uh interact and find information. Unfortunately, right now, our website is set up uh in our organizational structure, and so you need to sort of more or less know where you're going to find the information, and the, the modern municipal sites really look uh at the website through the lens of the customer uh and take away the organizational silos. And so I know council knows that we have launched uh that project, uh and that will bear fruit on the separate as well.
And then just for myself, you know, councilmember Davis used to talk about being, going in to sign up to where you can get alerts. I will be honest, I, I do, it does come through me on the email, and everybody knows my IT background, so if I can sign up, I, it's, it's easier than it, it seems once you get in um and correct uh to councilmember Hamilton. Um I think there should be a way for easier, but I also think, because I'm not signed up, to where my understanding is, is that let's say there's a, the, the toilets uh running, which can raise your rates quickly, not even realizing if it's overnight for a long period. But I, I thought I heard that you could set it to where it, it pings you, you could also go back and look, why was it elevated at this hour? Um and is that, is that available? Because that, I think, is what folks should be able to sign up for, that uh also would be of value.
Yes, mayor, through that portal, you can see your, your usage at any given moment. Uh that is due to uh for residential customers, uh we have uh the automatic meter readers uh on there, and we do have a project to install those for our commercial customers as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, again, thank you for the presentation and feedback.